We'll just be here doing, I'll be drinking water and Denise will be doing work.
Oh yeah, he's supposed to be working with Mike on this.
I'm not sure he knows that while he's here.
Oh, that's a good point. Mm-hmm, good point.
He might be gone by the time we got to this.
If I forget, just.
Yep.
Just what I was saying. Alright, everybody, it's 6:30. It is now 6:30, so I will call to order the select board meeting of, my goodness, June 4th, 2018. Though it feels a little bit like April 4th out there.
Yes, it does.
So, okay.
I'll put a C in as well, just in case.
We've got two sets of minutes to review, because we did meet the week of the Memorial Day week. It was a short meeting, but we did have a meeting. So Denise, how do they look?
They look fine.
Alright, I'm ready by consensus to accept those two sets of minutes. Any community input this evening? Okay. Department head business. I will go right to you, George, but just remind me to come back and talk about building inspector and fire, if you will.
Okay.
Because sometimes I, there's just some things to say, so come on, George, thank you.
Can I ask you one more question?
Lines for the police, with the O and other than zero instead of the all, for these, for the Os.
Okay.
So it's R, zero. Only if you're at 700, is that, are you with that one?
Go ahead.
Okay, alright.
I have P O for showroom services for street sweeping, I want to get that done.
Okay, alright.
So fifteen hundred dollars, as per.
Is that the budget guidelines?
Yep.
Alright. Are you doing, do you want to move this?
Purchase order 1422 for, what does that word?
Showroom.
Showroom.
Showroom services for street sweeping for a sum of fifteen hun- is that not to exceed, or is that a good question?
That's our budget item, if it goes, we'll start at that.
At, for fifteen hundred dollars.
I'll second that, okay, any questions? So, I will just make a comment about purchase orders. My feeling is that the purchase order is, especially when it's not ahead of time, which is the way it's supposed to be, thank you so much, George, is that, you know, if, if it gets exceeded by like one to four maybe percent, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't know that our, I don't think our auditor would either. So it doesn't have to be precise. What I'm concerned about when I see something is that it's within the, we've paid attention to the budget. And, and that it's ahead of time, love, that we all do it ahead of time, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to say, do you have any other questions? Alright, I'll call, all those that they were saying hi.
Hi.
Hi. Passes, whoops, yes, Simon, it's using.
I don't know when it's gonna be, it's, he's gonna schedule it in, so.
And you'll, you'll talk to.
I gotta talk to PD so we can make sure the town hall is notified, keep the cars out of the way.
We can put something on, on the news blog too, so check, just coordinate Caroline.
And they might want to put that road construction, just starting on heritage.
This week. Heritage.
They're gonna grind out heritage, those spots, and then they're gonna dig that, the ground crew is available this week. They're gonna take the grinder to Rochester, do a small project, and then it's coming back Thursday to start the other project.
Please check in with Caroline, 'cause she'll make sure that just a small thing goes out on.
Yeah, I, I put it on Facebook, in the Facebook page already, so PD usually forwards it, or the fire department can forward it, so everybody gets it on each site, so.
Okay, but there's still a news blog that comes out, and there's some, just to cover all the faces. Thank you, and also.
Get it back.
I don't, I, I'll never learn the paper frosts.
Alright, I assume.
So, because Caroline will send it to posting, so it means it also appears printed at the post office here and at the library. So it's just a, check in, just coordinate that with Caroline, she'll, she'll be good about that. Okay, anything else that you have, we have a bit of a list here, I see.
No, no, it's all small things.
I have a bit of a list too, they, they could be intersecting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Light poles and Stockdale.
Oh.
Who owns them?
Do you know?
I don't.
No, I don't either. I know they've come up in conversation, because some folks want to see them painted.
Some folks want to see them working.
And they're not working.
The one has been out for twelve years, I've been told.
Twelve years, that's quite a while. So, I, I'm not sure how to, how to find out. You might check with Caroline to see if she can maybe check.
I mentioned it to Caroline, and she thinks the town owns them, because they, Public Services, uh, Everstors does not own fancy street lights, I've been told.
Okay.
So, I think when the development gets taken over, I think the town owns them.
The town owns them?
I know it happens everywhere in Belwick, when the town takes over the development.
Alright, so then, so now we're talking about what, we're talking about?
I don't know, I might have Ray look at it, he's electrician, Ray from Water.
Ray, oh, oh, the superintendent, yes, yes, got it.
So let's just think of.
Remind me his last.
Ray, we.
Do you remember? Okay, that's alright, that's alright.
I can't think of it off the top of my head anyways.
Yeah.
But he's a licensed electrician, I just have him come up and see if he can take a look at it, see if there's power there or something.
Yeah.
If it's a power issue, then might have taken a part, might be a broken wire in brown.
Yeah, after twelve years, it might be nice to have it fixed.
Yeah, I was stopped by the person that lives at, I don't get, I don't remember his name. He lives at number 440 Stockdale Circle. And he also mentioned the sidewalk in front of his house, there's a lot of roots that come up, and the sidewalk is a dick, it is a trip hazard. We will fix that.
Thank you.
Ourself.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, it's not gonna happen till after the projects are done.
Yeah.
But it's about maybe fifty to seventy-five feet of sidewalk, we'll dig out, take the roots out of it, because the trees aren't even cut down, get the stump out of there, and we can build that side, put that sidewalk back to.
Is it a concrete or an asphalt sidewalk?
It's pavement, hardtop, yeah, so it's, I don't know, every five ton of hardtop, so it's probably seventy, all of the ton, whatever, so.
Okay.
And we'll do it ourself.
Alright.
So I want to give a heads up on that. Anything on, from engineering on?
No. We, we haven't signed the general services agreement. He knows, he's got it, he, he, we passed along some insurance, questions from our insurance, come carrier back to him, and he also knows that he owes us the Sligo Road. So, nope, but, but, you know, I'm leaving, so get Caroline to check in with him, or another board member.
It's nothing we could have to do right today.
No, but it would be nice to.
It's standard, if we can.
And, and to get the cost, so that we can start to figure out how we're going to manage it.
Right.
And if we can manage it, right? So that's, so would be helpful to, to have that, so I would say keep on, keep, keep on him.
That's what I have for Stockdale and Coles, Doyts, and, and is your Public Works Association, are you familiar with?
I'm sure Public Works Association, I believe you said.
I know, the Road Agents Association.
Yeah, that, I, I had gotten hold of that and sent it to you.
When I was at the meeting in Dover for Stonewater.
Yep.
They said, a lot of the guys went to a, went to a Public Works Association meeting just recently, and they find out a lot of good things. I mean, they got, one of the guys suggested that we probably ought to belong to it. So we, you know, get involved with some of these meetings, I don't know how often they meet, but, and.
Personally, I don't know how Denise feels, but personally, I feel networking can be really important with people, colleagues who are close by.
Yep. And I agree, I mean, there's some things that come up, you know, rules that change and stuff like that, I think we need to know.
Yep, and we're a small town.
Right.
So we don't have a lot of the resources ourselves, so I, I don't know, Denise, do you do?
The Road Agent Association has meetings and stuff too, but it's again, it's on a smaller scale, but, I think being involved with both of these, we probably would, you know.
Yeah, but find out if there's a cost, maybe they're.
I think there's a, he said there's a small cost in doing it. I'm not sure what it is, I just wanted to make, bring that up.
Yeah, I would say that the board would be amenable, of course, it's going to, I'd like to see what the cost is going to be. That's it, on your list?
Your turn.
I have a long list. So, driveway culverts on Sligo Road. So my understanding is that, excuse me, that's one of the possibilities that we might think about using the money in excess of the pipe contract to do. So.
Right.
Have you changed your mind about that?
No, I, I, after I spoke with you last week about the, about the contract, it's not as much as I expected.
Yes, I, I, I know, yes, I, I had it, I had the number.
You did, you were right.
Yeah.
So.
Unfortunately, I was correct.
I did get prices on piping, and it's not that expensive, it's about a hundred dollars a twenty-foot section for, for cover. Installing it ourself is just, we're gonna be here for work anyway.
Sure.
So that doesn't make, you know.
Right.
I mean, it'll involve paving sometimes, so that'll be bringing a cost in, if it, if we have to affect somebody's driveway. Again, I don't know how many there is, if.
Well, that, that's why, we'll keep it on this.
Yeah.
Until you have time, and you're gonna be busy for a while, I think, once they start. But when you're, when you are at a time, you can see how much of Sligo you're gonna do, and how many driveways and.
I don't know how long it's, you know, it's, ditching takes some time, it's a slow process, especially with a backhoe, that, you know, you usually do an estimator, you can move right along, but.
Yeah.
We, you know, we can do it, it's just gonna take a little time.
Right, but we'll need, we'll need to get in touch with homeowners.
Oh yeah, before.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, where it affects their property, we shouldn't have to if it's affecting the ditching.
The ditching is in the public way, but the, the, the drive, if we install a driveway culvert, they have to maintain it.
Right, I, I would definitely, before we do any driveways, I would be, but I get.
I think we still have the right to do it, George, I, I, I think it's, because it's the public way, so I think we have the right to do it, we think it's good for our road, but as a matter of, just, yeah.
Right.
Just, just.
No, no, I, I wouldn't be doing any driveways until, I mean, there's, we gotta get along the road going before we get to that point anywhere, the road's gonna be losing.
So I'll just, just keep it there, because I know it's something that you're, you're thinking about.
Yeah.
Uh, the Lamprey Truck Sale, so this is really about having to find municipal solid waste in the demo hauling by June 30th. So is, how is that piece?
We could, I think we need to sit down with Triano.
Okay.
We gotta quote for them, for almost a hundred dollars last, Shipyard or anybody else.
Where they had it.
They're out of Portland, but all of the equipment's maintained at Atlantic and stuff like that, and we called up there, they do acting, that's how we could hold them.
Yep, we had, we've had them out to our transfer station just one day, giving us, I don't know what we were thinking of doing.
But just to.
Very nice, family-owned company. Seemed like a good.
Doing the trucking, they were two twenty-five, I think they committed, and it was two ninety-five or higher for the rest. And there's no surcharges for them until it goes over five dollars an hour for fuel, and then a mere fuel surcharge.
Okay, but right now, they're not doing the fuels.
Right, and that's, you know.
Okay.
But I think, you know, we, I think it's worth looking into, because of.
Do they, now, when we were using the company before Shipyard, the name of which escapes me right now, but they're out of Manchester.
Penard.
Penard. Penard.
Yeah, Penard's not interested in transporting to waste management.
Oh, right, right, they, correct. So that's why, you know, they were gonna, we had signed a contract with them.
Right.
And so when we went to Shipyard, they said, we don't do contracts, it's just month to month. So, did, did that come up with Triano, were they expecting a contract, or?
No, I, I don't think, he just, he, Ed told him it'd be probably home once or twice a week.
Yeah.
And he just, that's what the price was, it was two twenty-five.
Well, yeah, if you could find out, or have Caroline find out if there's a contract involved, because of course that will need to come, for the board, the board will have to sign it before we actually.
But I just know, that was his pricing, so I mean, that, you know, we can talk with them and see what he can offer. I mean, even going to the, I mean, demo, I mean, any.
Shipyard, yeah, what Shipyard's currently doing, yeah, I, I asked him.
And I mean, we're renting a dumpster now, we have two extra dumpsters, we don't need to be renting a dumpster from anybody.
Yeah.
Now, we couldn't have to.
And Shipyard is, we're not getting a surcharge, both a fuel surcharge, and we're paying additional for the recycling because of the.
More trash.
So now, now the recycling piece may be the same for Triano, because, you know, they're facing the same issues, but I don't, I don't know that, so.
And I, I think that's gonna be a national idea, because.
It's collapsing at the moment, China is no longer accepting.
It's more garbage, and people aren't rinsing stuff out, and stuff, it's, it's more garbage than they're getting out, so.
So it's difficult, so.
So, and I get that, but there's some, there's some things that you just cannot get.
Right.
Clean, so does that go in waste?
I'm not in, up to that, you know, I'm not.
Well, I mean, you can't put it in recycling, so what are you gonna do with it?
Because it goes in the municipal solid waste.
Then that, then it goes to waste.
Well, I mean, like, I, I, you know.
You know what, I think, to be honest with you, I think a lot of this recycling is, it's, looks good on the road.
Yeah.
A recycled truck goes out, but I've seen the recycled truck in some of the, go right to landfill, you know, it's, it looks good.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I just like coleslaw containers, I mean, I just rinse it out. You know, not soap, I mean, not using soap and water, but I make sure there's no pieces.
Right.
Right, but like peanut butter, I mean, you could be putting boiling water in that for two days straight, and it won't be coming out, I mean, clean like it should be.
I don't know, you know, what they're talking about, how, how they can, you know, a lot of that stuff you can't get out.
Well, it just, it just is so thick and whatever, you know.
And it, and it's hard to know, so I, for peanut butter jar, I do put a little bit of soap and hot water, let it sit there for a while, and I shake it up, put the cap back on, shake it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It takes, it's a, it's a process, it's a cleaning process, you know.
It's a process.
It's a process.
But I can, we can get ahold of them and talk with them, get, bring them in to talk with them, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and, you know, after we get, the important thing is to get the, the municipal solid waste and the demo hauling in place, but certainly we can say, and by the way, at some point, we may want to talk to you about our recycling as well.
Right, because, I mean, now Shipyard does the demo plus, uh.
Ship, no, the demo, the demo goes to, my, my understanding is demo and municipal solid waste go to the landfill.
But it was hauled by.
But it was all hauled by a truck that.
Okay.
And that, and that is now being hauled by Shipyard.
Okay, so Shipyard, that's the part that we need, is just the demo and the.
The demo and municipal solid waste, that's what, what we're gonna lose as a.
I thought someone said that Shipyard hauled out demo and recycling, it's just the one, okay.
Just the recycling, now, right now, they're doing everything.
Right.
Right, but, yeah, no, the land, our contract with landfill, with Turnkey, allows us to bring municipal solid waste and our demo stuff.
Okay. So he, still, it's, the price of hauling is not gonna change, but Triano had, so, but, you know, like you said, we, if, if he wants a contract, then we'll bring that up, but I'll, we'll mention it to him.
Okay.
So, you know, if there is a contract needed or whatever.
Okay. Excellent. Landfill annual post closure report, we have it here, Mike, Mike said he would sit down and work with you on this, or Ed, or somebody. I don't know if he's had the opportunity, but.
No, we, we looked at that, I mean, basically, I don't know, like, from the previous years, it's.
We don't think we've ever filed it.
Well.
So, you might.
It was due March 31st, so we do have to look at it soon.
We've got a great period there though.
Well, I know.
I, I would suggest that Caroline try to get ahold of either Ed Jansen or Al Dion, and ask them if they can help us with this. I don't think they ever filled it out either, but they may be able to answer some of the questions that we simply cannot. So, or if I'm gone, as a follow-up.
We're still using the same transfer station, I mean, there's.
We had a landfill.
Yeah, landfill, right, but.
But there was a whole process in the.
I know, but there's no, I don't see there's no test wells or anything over there, is there?
There was.
Was it?
I thought there was.
I don't know, I don't know.
Ed Jansen's the one that can answer those questions, because he was, he did the whole process, you know. So, I, I believe there was test wells and they did it for you. Charlie, were you on it, some budget committee back then, when we, when the landfill was going on, didn't they have test wells, do you remember?
I think so.
I think, I, yeah, I'm almost positive that they did.
I mean, if someone had a question, they'd answer it from where.
Well, you don't know unless you're here, or unless, so the first time we fill it out is gonna be the hardest.
Right.
And so, maybe, maybe you should, if you don't mind, contact Caroline and ask her.
Sure, yeah.
To bring Ed in, or somebody who was here at the time.
Yeah.
To help fill it out, because.
He was highly involved in it, Ed Jansen was, you know, he was the one that organized this whole thing, so.
Let's try Ed first, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Road Service Management System. So I, as you know, I, 'cause I copied you, I believe, and I think I copied the board, I checked in with the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. And, so, there's a two-step process to using their system to, to update what we've been using. The first is assessment of roads. And so the first time, we were a pilot site for the software, and so that an SRPC staff person's going out assessing our roads. But now, we're no longer a pilot, and so what the former, retired executive director told us is that we, you know, there would be a cost for this. And, so, I'm thinking to myself, well, nobody knows the codes like George and Ed. So, what, my thought is, is be, is after they get trained, and, and it's Colin, I think, who's, Colin Lentz, who's at SRPC, who we might hear from in my absence, or maybe not. And, but Caroline is also on the contact list. And, what I said is, don't, don't let my absence hold anything back. So if he can train you, because, you and Ed, just because he may be, there may be something new in the program that says, we want, we want the assessors to look for this, and it may not be something that you would take a note of, maybe how many driveways, I don't, I'm just making this up.
I mean, I, I went out in Belwick and raided the road one to five, and which road?
Right, but they're, they're doing more, they're doing spidering, they're doing, you know, their characteristic, is it spidering?
Yes, for the road, you're all from middle block.
Yeah, whatever the terms are. So, so there'd just be, may be some characteristics that they would want you to look for. You know, maybe like one-hour meeting, you know, it's, can't be forever, because it's roads, and you know roads, and you sure have more experience with roads actually than Colin does, because he knows it from a planning perspective, but not so much from a. So, so I have checked with them, it's likely that we won't be able to sit down to actually update our, what we're gonna want to do until sometime in July. Possibly even August.
And then we get the project started in July anyway.
Yeah, so, or, or even August, but I would like to have it updated, I'd love to have a public hearing, and then of course, you know, all that stuff goes into our 2019 budget. So that's the update on the Road Service Management System, that we all call just the ten-year road plan. And you know, if, if they can't, if they aren't ready, if there's yet another delay, we'll just use the spreadsheet that we have.
I wanna look at the, I gotta look at that a little bit closer and see where, which road is what, and see, I mean, there's some roads that are probably better than some now.
Absolutely, sure, things change, but the, what, what, what you see in that Excel spreadsheet is different from what's, you're gonna see when we sit down with an SRPC person. They've actually got the, the, I can't look that way, but they've got, they've got the roads by segments, and they will ask you, us, but it'll be you, and, you know, an input from Ed, if you want Ed to be part of the process.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
You know, is this, what do you want to do, do you wanna, is this, like when we did Bear Road. So, so one of the first things we did was Bear Road, and we actually did the first year Bear Road, before we had this Road Service Management System. So we did, and we did about a little more than half, I think. And we put a binder code, and we knew we were gonna finish the rest of it the next year. And so, so the next year was also the first year we started planning, and so we, or maybe we had already finished the whole thing, with the final code, whatever. He said, okay, so now you've got Bear Road all finished, when are you going to have to attend to it next? And so it's on our plan, it's somewhere in twenty-something, it says, you know, ceiling. And, and somewhere, so it's, so, so we don't just plan the big thing, but also, once we.
Do your maintenance.
Yeah, what, what, what are you gonna do next, when do you want to do it, how long will it take, you know, how long will that be? Here's another street, and you say, oh no, it's in pretty good condition, I think we just need to overlay it. So that's what they, you know, so they go through and they talk to us about what it is that we think, I'm using we, you know, the royal we, whatever, you know, what we think we want to do for that road. And, and as you said, the, the, the sequence of events, as we laid them out then, may be much different, and.
Depends on the traffic on your road, I mean, there's, it's a lot to come into play.
There's Oak Street, because we realized at some point after we had done that, that Oak Street is not on that list. And the reason it's not is because the state has the whole thing going to Dover. And so when SRPC was the generator of the data, and they get their data from the state, and blah, 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 and it didn't occur to us that Oak Street wasn't on it, so we have to put Oak Street on it.
Right.
And.
It's gonna jump, have a few.
Yeah, but I, you know, I, as I said already in the conversation with John Store, I told him, we could think about some cost sharing, soft dollar cost sharing, you know, not hard money, soft dollar cost sharing, this year and or next year, but the earliest, the absolute earliest we can think about having money is 2020, because next year we are committed to finishing what we started at, at Heritage and Lowes's car. So, but, so Oak Street's gonna have to be on that list.
Absolutely.
And it may, it may come up in 2020 based on the other things that we see, I don't know.
One thing they were talking about is just overlaying that road, because, I guess they're still talking about replacing the bridge, I don't know.
The bridge is the state's bridge, John said, he's, I don't know if you've ever met him yet, he's, he's, yeah, he's, he's a nice man, he's a funny man. I met him on, he was from Rochester, he was on the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition. And, you know, he was saying, you know, there are holes in the bridge, and he says, I don't know, how do you fill holes in a wooden bridge, you know, he's like, wood buddy, you know. Seriously, yeah.
I go over it every single day.
Yeah, and he said, how do you, how do you repair that? And, and they, you know, I think they're talking to the state about whether the state's gonna come up to the plate to fix it, but, you know, clearly, you know, John didn't say anything definitively, but, you, you know, Dover, it's a, it's a major local route.
Absolutely.
And so, if the state.
I mean, it's already downplayed, downplayed with tonnage on the bridge, so.
Yeah, right.
And there's, there's, nobody now, because you're still seeing the trucks and stuff from over it.
So whether Dover decides to do anything on that bridge by itself, it, it, we have, we have no, we gave up all rights, ownership to that bridge.
We, we took a ride yesterday today, actually, and outside of the road isn't in too bad a shape right now.
I, I was, every time I go over it, I say the same thing, I say, we did a pretty good job, you know.
Well, we, I said Dover did that this winter, and that outside's holding up a lot better than this.
Interesting.
But, yeah, there's gonna have to be something in there, but.
So, so if, so again, I haven't heard back and forth stories since he got ahold of me last week, and I said, I'm not gonna be around after two days. So I said, you know, I think you need a, a meeting to figure out if there's cost sharing that we can do, or what you want to do with, if there's something you want to do this summer, or next summer, and that a board member should be there, and you, and Caroline. Now, if that's, if a board member can't be there, then Caroline should be there, but I prefer to have a board member there, and so then you could decide whether you thought it would be good to have Caroline come along or not.
Oh, I think it would be, for sure.
You know, because she kinda has also a kind of a global idea of budgets and resources and stuff. So that will, may or may not, you know, again, you know, heads of DPW, busy people. So, I, I don't know if this will pop up, back up on his list, such that he wants to do something this summer, but if it happens while I'm gone, he knows that, he has to contact, I think, a broader, can't just contact me. And then the, this item about grading dirt roads versus cleaning catch basins, that came about, George knows why, so we've already had a conversation. Somehow John Store heard from one of his supervisors that, well, they could, maybe they could, you know, work on our dirt roads and regrade them, you know, you know, use their grader and regrade them, and we could do their storm drains or something like that. And, can I sell, grader?
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I said, too, I saw.
Yeah, so, so we, so in fact, I thought, well, maybe we have a piece of equipment that does a good job of grading, I don't know, but the answer is no, we don't, we don't, so. And I don't know why there's a quid pro quo here, if I would have thought we would work on dirt roads and they would fix all of Oak Street, you know what I mean? So I, I don't know, but anyway.
But, yeah, I mean.
It's nice to have these kinds of collaborative efforts. I just don't know what we can provide or help, and what they can do in return.
Like I said, the only thing I know about a grader is the one that I designed to do the shoulders, and if that could be used by then, then we could work there now.
Then we have, then we have something to offer, so that will be something to mention to them at that meeting.
But I mean, that's saving us a ton of money on these projects we're doing, so.
The, the last thing on this item is, is not a sure bet, I'm just, it's, Caroline put it here, I guess, just because I wanted to make sure, I don't know that we're doing a drop box, the board hasn't decided on that, but if we put some kind of a drop box in front of Town Hall somewhere, would the highway department be willing to dig the post and cement it in, or do whatever?
I honestly believe it should be on the top step where that drops down on the right, look, I mean, on a left looking net, it's out of the way.
I, I don't know the answer to that, we haven't, we haven't decided.
They decide to do that.
Yeah, you know, and, so, so we'll talk about that, but my own personal feeling, if we decide to do it, is that the, our, I want our chief of police to be involved in what is the safest, most secure spot for it, so.
Yeah, there's no problem, it's, I've installed it, that's not.
That's why it's here, but if it's not down below, we should, I'm gonna make an arrow, because we, we need to talk about that as a board. Alright, I don't have anything else, anything Denise that?
Nothing, okay with me.
All right, so Wednesday, good luck Wednesday, have fun.
That's the other part, I do have a little more thing. Do I have to babysit these guys the whole project, or show up occasionally during the day and make sure, I mean, these guys know more about roads than I do.
Just general oversight.
Okay, that's, I mean, we, cause we've got things we could be doing besides, I mean, we're gonna be there flagging.
You know, if you show up randomly, and you have to be there flagging, so somebody has to be there flagging to whenever they.
Yeah, we're gonna use, you know, we're gonna use the guys from transfer station, they do the flag, and then they, so, you know, I mean.
I mean, I mean, I say they show up randomly, yeah.
We will see somebody around, I mean, it's just.
You're gonna be in contact, and you're gonna be able to be in contact, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's. Yeah, I mean, they, they'll, you know, I mean, you know if they're doing something wrong right away, and they got a contract to fulfill, and that penalty, you know, anyway.
Well, this was, um, you know, there, there have been some companies that we've had, that have responded to our RFPs that we were, we did, you know, when we checked references, they, they were not good, Pike was not one of, did not fall into that category, so, but still.
Oh, no, I, oh, I'm not saying not to be, I mean.
But they don't, no, I would say they don't require constantly, so, so use your best judgment, George.
Oh, yeah, we'll be around to make sure things are going all right.
All right, so have fun, and let's, let's hope that that.
I'm hoping this, we know, they down, it's just something foolish, we don't have to take down too deep to find that.
Yep, okay, I hope so too, take care.
Night.
I did get your email, and I did check that.
All right, um, so I wanna thank you, I just wanted to go back to, to code enforcement. So Tom has been writing some letters, and we did forward the letter along, the one that we decided to forward along to our town council, we did do that. So I just wanted to make that update. I don't have anything to say about fire, or, or, please, so we can just go right down to our section. So budgets, uh, let's, let's do the second one because it's easier. So 2018, uh, we, I've given you, this is not there because we're already done, so I've given you the CIP, and you'll get back in touch with me with questions. And I've also given you the 2018 budget that can be used as the basis for the default budget that, that we have to produce. And we let the, all people involved in budgeting to get back to us by, yeah, until late September. All right, 2019, so we got an email, a board did, from our tax collector asking us to consider, uh, not doing the, not doing the resident tax anymore, and or not doing the property inventories. So, um, so I asked Caroline when, a few questions, and, but the important one for me is by, by when in a year do we have to make a decision for the following year? So, for the inventories, we will get a letter in like July or August from the state, cause they actually print them for us. And they'll say, do you wanna continue, you wanna do this again, and how many inventory cards should we print? So we'll need to be ready by July or August to answer that question. The resident tax, uh, excuse me, we think it follows the tax year. So if we, for, if we decided, for example, not to collect it in 2019, what, you know, we would, we could choose to stop it at 1231, right? So we'd, we'd get all the money, the anticipated revenue that we thought we would get in, in 2018 and 2019, and then, and then just if we chose, stop it in 2019. But what, and what would happen is for those three months where there might, there might be some money, she would, uh, our tax collector would do an abatement. So just like an accounting thing, and then we would be completely out of the business. So, we don't have to, so we don't have to decide either one of those right this very minute. I, I've been thinking about them, and the first thing that pops into my mind is the lack of revenue. But with regard to the resident tax, uh, as Caroline pointed out, she says, well, other than the fact that residents are not, they don't like them, is what, you know, and, and we are the last of two towns. I, I don't remember, the other's the second town. And it, it is a lot of paperwork for, for what, our residents are paying us one way or the other. So if it removes the revenue from the revenue side, it will add, you know, something to, on, to the tax rate, right? If, when we, when we get around to that, whatever that is. So it really is just, we're taking away, if we decide to do this, a paper process that, you know, maybe, uh, is not worth the, the combined effort on our part, on our residents' parts to write up these little ten dollar checks. And, so I've been just recently thinking along that line, so I don't know if you had any initial thoughts on that?
Well, if you, if you're gonna put some kind of a dollar amount into the taxes, then your renters aren't paying anything. It's all, it's all gonna be on your homeowners.
Yes, that is true.
Okay, so that would be kinda like one thing, I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I think it's a pain, to be honest with you, I mean, I just think.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I just don't think it's worth it, I think. And that's obviously what every community, any, every municipality in the state of New Hampshire except for Rawlinsford and, do you remember the one I said the last time?
I can't remember what.
Holderness, I don't think it started, it wasn't Holderness.
It wasn't anything locally here, but.
No, it wasn't around here, it was somewhere else, so, uh.
You just never wanna lose revenue in one aspect, but, you know.
Right, so we would have to, so, so I, I've been thinking, if, so if we had as our kind of like guideline, uh, sort of trying to keep within two percent, you know, we could figure out how much Oak, if we didn't quite make the two percent, how much of it was due to the, you know, well, instead of paying your ten dollars, you're paying another, whatever it is, ten cents per, or five cents or two cents per thousand. And, you know, that's how we would, would, would explain it, it's, uh, it's just a different way to raise what is essentially a tax, and obviously no other.
But it's, it's part of your registration, so why couldn't that be applied to registrations of vehicles, or why, why put it on the tax bill?
I'm sorry, say that, we're talking about the residence.
Clearly, no, yeah, but residence tax, you, you have to, you, if you don't do the residence tax, you can't register your vehicle.
That is true.
Okay.
You're supposed to pay your resident tax whether you have a vehicle or not, it's just that that's, that's the sort of carrot and stick.
Okay, all right.
Uh, as it turns out, you know, what is the likelihood of somebody not having a vehicle? And people over sixty-five are exempted, and I think, so, and people under eighteen, so.
I just always associated it with registration, because that's when they get you.
That's when they get you, because, right, that's the carrot and stick, they, it's, uh, the state did pass that statute, if you do have a, uh, you do use that, then it has, you, you can enforce the not registering the vehicle, they haven't paid the resident tax. But it's a pain in the tush, all the way around. There's a lot of, you know, people have to write checks, we have to process them, we have to deposit them, and so, uh, and I think the resident tax, I, I, I don't have the budget in front of me, but, um, I think was, that, that particular one was maybe thirteen thousand in our, this year's budget. So, so it's just something to think about.
Yeah.
The inventory, uh, we get probably an equal amount of money from the inventory as a tax penalty, cause here's where we get the money.
Oh, you get it because they don't, they don't, yeah.
Yes, which, so my, my, I always feel bad about this, cause it's like a sleazy way to raise money. You know, people don't read that, they don't read the fine print, they get this little thing, they don't realize it, and then they get, we hit it within the tax time, and. So I've, I've never, um, I realize that I never particularly enjoy that tax, but again, it's about, you know, about the same amount, I can't remember exactly which, you know, ten, thirteen thousand in, in revenue. And, so that, again, that would have to be spread around the, the, the community, but it would be one other, probably annoying little thing that, could be, could be spared the residents to do. And the, this, they don't take the census, or they do take the census, but it does, it doesn't have any impact on the school?
I was really surprised to hear that, cause I thought filling out this form, I mean, gotta do it so they know what, you know, and then finding out that the school doesn't even get it, get the information.
Yeah, there's no, there's no cross communication, and apparently never has been, and they are no longer asking about animals. So it's not helpful for that.
I guess it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
So we can look at that when it, when that letter comes in and be thinking about it, we need to, we'll need to be ready to answer that. So the first one we'll need to try to figure out is the inventories. Because the state will be asking us in July or August, uh, if we wanna continue with them and how many we want.
And do you send it to them, to the state?
No, we, no, they print them out for us, or they, wait a minute, let me think about this, they, I don't know, I'm just thinking that. It's almost hoo-ha.
For, for absolutely nothing if they're not even going to the state.
Yeah, it's almost hoo-ha, and the other thing is, have you done anything to your property? And, you, you know, we've got, we've, we've really done a lot, I think, good work in building up consciousness about building permits, and the necessity for building permits, we just put out another reminder, you know, we have the eyes and ears of the emperors that are out there. Which is not a bad thing, you know? And, so, you know, I think, you know, there are pros and cons to each of these, but I think, um, I, I can't say that I'm absolutely leaning towards getting rid of both of these, but I'm giving it serious, I'm giving it personally giving it serious thought, so.
Well, especially if the inventory, if it.
If it's not doing much of anything, other than trying, trying to trap somebody.
Yeah, and that's gonna get the penalty put on, and they don't even know it.
Yes, exactly, yeah, and I just don't, I just don't like, you know, that's really, that's what, that's where it is, that's where we get the money from it. Cause somebody has it written on print, or they, they, you know, we get busy. They get injured like me, and my home inbox is like, I don't even know what's at the bottom of it anymore, cause I haven't been able to attend to it. You know, and so then tax time comes, and they've got this penalty, and maybe they notice it, maybe they don't notice it, I don't know, but it's just seems a little sleazy, you know?
It is, yeah.
All right.
Where's the trees for station?
Post meeting chores, so management response, I don't know if you've had time to look at, at what I wrote. Um, I sent a, okay, I sent it out a couple of weeks ago, I think, so this is the, the response that I wrote to the auditor.
Oh, yeah, 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 I did make that.
So you and Mike can talk about it, and you can either decide that you like what I wrote, or you don't like what I wrote. If you like what I wrote, um, then we can just, you know.
I was okay with it, yeah, I was, I was okay with it, but Mike probably shouldn't, in his opinion.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, yeah, I'd like to get his input, so we'll, but if he comes back, clearly I'm okay with it, cause I wrote it.
Yeah.
So if the two of you are okay, one of the things that you might do is take a look at the thing about getting the cash registers.
Yeah, that's kind of, that's kind, I mean, they're talking, that's pricey, isn't it?
Well, that's what I mean, I don't know, so, I, I have no idea, so, you know, maybe somebody could do some scouting around about that.
Okay, cause I would, I would imagine it would have to be a locking one, or a code, I don't know much about cash registers, but they have got a code that you can get into it in order to use it, or something, I mean, if it's out, it's out and they're talking about the highway department, and then here.
Well, there are two slots, yeah, so we can think about.
This one is more secure.
We can think about them differently, so it, it might be easier here, but he doesn't like the money sort of, it's kinda out in the open, even though it's, it is your location, it's still, and he thinks, you know, at the end of the day, it provides a better audit trail of what you've done.
Have your tape to compare it.
Yeah, so, with the transfer station, he wanted to do something, so he also said, just do checks. And boy, I, I don't know how we would do that.
Well, I mean, probably seventy-five percent of the people don't use checks anymore, you know, on a day-to-day basis, they use a debit card or something.
Did my answer something like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's not the norm anymore.
And I called Lee, New Hampshire, because Jody, when she was doing some work at the transfer station, she had gone to pay a visit, and she loves Lee Transfer Station. And I think it is a really, they do a lot of good stuff there. And, and they, she came back saying they have a kiosk. And so you say, okay, I've got a TV, and they say, it's gonna be whatever it is, five dollars, ten dollars. And so they go to the kiosk, and they put in either cash or their credit card or whatever, and get a ten dollar ticket. Prints out ten dollars, and so, so the kiosk manages the money and in varying amounts. And so that's, well, that, that seems like a cool idea, so I called the, the town administrator back, back when I was starting to think about the responses to this, to the management letter. And she said, you know, we're thinking of getting rid of it. The cost of maintaining it is higher than we thought it was gonna be, the tickets, you know, the, the cost of keeping the tickets in there, and paying for the, the specialized printing or whatever it is, she said, we're thinking of removing it, so I said, okay, thank you very much. So, um, you know, we, we made some steps a few years back, because it was a significant finding. And, uh, on the audit, on this part of the audit, so we, you know, we get receipts, you know, they give out receipts, they've got a book. And every, I don't know how often, every Monday, Jeff used to come on Monday, yeah.
Comes once a month.
And they sorted out with Caroline.
So they hold it where?
They, they, they hold it there, I believe.
So I think that's why.
Really?
I think that's why.
In the highway barn, right, not in the little?
I have no idea.
Oh, it wouldn't be in the sheds.
It must be in the highway barn or something secure.
We can ask, I don't know the answer to that, but that could be why Tom was suggesting a cash registry.
Yeah, okay.
If you think that's the only story that you'll discover in the next three years?
Probably not.
All right, so, but, but those are things that, you know, if you're talking about with Mike too, you could think about, what does this mean for, for next, which of these things are, do we think we can work on?
In vegetarian, yes, okay.
I don't remember myself what all of them were, but.
Yeah, those, I know, I remember the cat.
Things like the purchase orders, you know, it's, it's just trying to keep our department heads on top of, that's a process.
We really need to put it out there that they cannot buy before they get a P O, there's, there's been some violations in my time, so.
It's, it's a finding every year, it's on, it's on a material finding, and it's on, you know, so, but it's, it's, it's been there every year, cause. All right, uh, so that's B, uh, C, we're tabling that, cause Michael, Mike's alone, so, we'll discuss that. We're tabling D, well, D one, the general services agreement, I didn't hear back from Aaron. And as you know, uh, George is waiting to hear. So the general services agreement, we still haven't signed yet, because there, we just wanna iron out those insurance questions. And then we don't even have a task order either, that would fall under that, so we'll have to work on that. But we, we haven't heard, so, so the other thing, number two, is, I think the board's been copied on this whole, like, it was the one like just today, or maybe starting over the weekend, I don't know what. But there's a grant opportunity from the state that is helpful to, for clean water. I thought at first it was just, um, for water treatment plants, but it's not, for stormwater as well. And so, John Jackman, who's an engineer at, well, Tanner, has, um, you know, said, well, you know, you, are you guys considering the, the, there's a deadline of June fifteen? There's a program where you can, you can either get grants, or get a, a loan that is entirely forgiven. So you have to put the money up upfront, but they will pay it all back, the state will pay it all back. I don't know exactly what the, the time is, maybe within a year, I'm not really sure. But, uh, he, he said that they would write the pre-application letter, the deadline is six fifteen, and I said, I said, I'm not.
This year, six fifteen, this year?
Yeah, he, he said he would do, it's a, it's just, it's like a, a notice of intent. It just says, yes, we're thinking of putting in a, the grant application itself would be due the end of December, if I recall. So, but they wanna know, I don't know why, but they like to get an idea how many people are thinking of this, what are they thinking of doing? So, uh, my own thought, I'm not gonna be around here when, and I don't know, it's to me go nowhere, he may, cause I, I'm. My own thought, I'm not gonna be around here when, and I don't know, it's to me go nowhere, he may, cause I, I'm, I can't, I have to start stopping, because I'm just not gonna be here. I think he would like the town, but I'm just sort of guessing, to buy an, uh, or license an asset management system that Hoyle Tanner has developed, which may be wonderful, but it may not be what we need most of all. So, it would be, if this comes in, if I, if a letter comes in, this pre-application, we have to, you, you and Mike to decide, I mean, there's no commitment, really. It just says, you're thinking about it. Or you can just say, well, I don't know, we don't even wanna think about it. So, and I'm fine, I'm not gonna second guess, whatever the two of you decide.
Okay.
It's fine, that's what it is. If we're gonna, if we're gonna do the pre-application, the deadline is six fifteen, and well, there's no cost for him, he said.
To do it.
To do it. There would be some cost if we needed their help to do the actual grants.
Okay.
But that's the one that's due at the end of December.
Okay.
Uh, alright, family fund day insurance. So, I wanted to have some overall kind of conversation with Caroline on insurance, and, uh, but, I, I realized that my stamina was, general, whatever, was not gonna allow me to do this, but, but she really would like you to call her about family fund day. And maybe what we did last year, we're thinking of doing quite the same way this year, so maybe this is sort of a bit better, that you talked to her about this.
Okay, I thought she was gonna be here tonight, actually.
She, she was, and then, uh, I may have been more responsible for telling her not to, and then she said, make, just make sure Denise gives me a call.
Okay.
I thought you were her five oh one C three.
No.
Did you, was that?
R E F is, Rollins Education Foundation is five oh one.
And we are, we, we.
But Family Day isn't.
Arch is, we, uh, the garden club is.
Yeah.
Did you consider it?
It's a big undertaking, it's a big undertaking. I mean, I will if it's gonna, if, I would, I mean, obviously I can't do it for this year. Um, I would consider it if it's going, if I'm gonna gain anything from it. I mean, I, I don't know what I'll gain from it, as in being it. But, my understanding on the insurance was, and that's what, we did this last year, that we were covered because we are, we are doing a town event.
I, I think that's the piece you need to revisit with Caroline, that there may have been a misunderstanding when she talked to Primex about exactly what a town event was.
Okay.
So.
Because the only thing that, I mean, fireworks company has their own insurance.
Okay.
So, that's, take that out of the picture, you know, it's really just what we do at the Legion, in the ballpark, and on the, on the grounds.
And it may be sufficient to have event day insurance, I don't know how expensive that is.
How expensive it is, I don't, yeah, I mean, we can look into that, I mean, I can look into it.
Talk to, talk to Caroline. Alright, um, the drop box maybe, I, I'm gonna wait for that till the end for right now, let's see what else we can take care of. So, there was a, David Waters sent a reminder letter, and my, my response was to Caroline, reminder? So, I guess he's holding office hours this week?
Well, they, he sent out, he sent out a couple of emails.
Okay, I must have just, it must have been when I wasn't.
It was a little while ago, I had it in my email file, but, um, yeah, he said, I can't come, I mean, it's.
No, he's, he's just a tier of constituents, and so.
It's just gonna open it up, and the town office is open at that time, so, it will be there.
Yes, yeah, you know, we've done it for our, um, national reps, you know, as well, you know, Congress, mostly Congress people. We usually, we've never had a U.S. Senator come, but, uh, I know that, I think Carol Shay Porter's come, and, uh, Ginta, yeah, Ginta's been here. So, you know, if they're doing constituent services, then that's fine, that's a acceptable use for, for the minutes of the building. So, I just said, told Caroline, we'll just put it out on the website, because, you know, so, or Dave, he's, he's gonna make trouble.
Come here, nobody's been in there, yeah.
So, that's that. Uh, we're still working on dumpsters for buildings of four or more units. Uh, Tom is in the process of writing a letter. Um, there's, I know Caroline has had some conversation, or Tom has had a conversation with our neighbors next door, about the placement of that and paving, and so they may be taking something to the Z B A in order to do the amount of paving that they. The amount of paving that she did, she heard that they wanted to do is probably requires a variance in the Z B A. But anyway, the, an actual comprehensive, a letter to a comprehensive list is not yet happened yet. Uh, alright, recreation, so what?
Do you think you might wanna have Chief Dushan take care of this, cause this could, we need to go into non.
What can you do?
Uh, no, let's, no, we're happy to do you. Please, come up, we're happy, that sounds terrible, but we're happy to.
Well, good evening.
Hi, Hawaii.
What is that? Do you have a little something going on there?
Well, I guess, since you bring it up, I'll, I'll mention it. Um, the guy wanted to do a fundraiser for Officer Gepesquali. And, uh, the first of several, is that the guy said, alright, let's do some facial hair. Uh, but they have to raise money and get sponsors and whatnot, so, uh, I've allowed folks to, to grow facial hair, actually.
Oh, is it normally not, uh?
Oh, no, normally we don't allow facial, you, you get a masthead, but that's it, no goatee, or anything like that.
Just like the Yankees. Just like, just like the Yankees.
And, um, so between Memorial Day and Labor Day, they can have facial hair.
Okay.
But they have to raise money for the officers, so.
Well, thank you for that explanation.
So, you, you'll see some, a couple of us, anyway, trying to grow something. Trying to grow something. Okay, Cruises, Cruises, Cruises. I saw the, um, meeting, I guess last week, last week's meeting was postponed, or until Tuesday. Uh, why, I did not see that at the time, so I was unable to review.
Well, that's okay, I mean, what, there wasn't gonna be a meeting, right, cause it was, we were closed, Monday was Memorial Day, normally we just don't have it. We had a, we had a special meeting, it was, I don't even remember, we, something we had to do.
Building permit, oh, I can see.
Was Lorraine?
Lorraine, yeah, we were, that's it, we were meeting with the town about the town manager, so, and any other business that came up, so it was not a real, so you didn't miss anything.
Well, the Friday prior.
Yes.
Cruises seventy-two, um, the thermostat housing unit cracked on it, split open. So, all of the antifreeze poured out of it. Sent it to Dover as emergency repair, and they, they were able to, uh, to fix it for us. Uh, they said it's gonna be less than three hundred dollars for that repair, so, we got lucky with them. So, I had purchase order number fourteen hundred for City of Dover, for it to repair and replace the thermostat housing unit, Cruises number seventy-two, for three hundred dollars.
Is Cruises seventy-two, um, was that one of them that had the other, other problems?
That's the one that initially had the transmission issue, that we sent the bill's transmission, and replaced the fluid in it, I guess.
Do you think that all has something to do with it?
No, I don't think so, I think it was just.
Just one of those things.
It's one of those things.
Regular maintenance.
Alright, purchase order fourteen hundred for a rear repair and replace thermostat housing unit for Cruises seventy-two for three hundred dollars.
A second there.
Okay.
Uh, any questions or comments? Always free to say hi.
Hi.
Alright.
Okay, Cruises number seventy-three, I sent it to Dover for evaluation. Um, the engine light was on, and there was a knocking on the, on the front end, so they found that we need to replace a ball joint in that car, needs a tuna. And the ball bearing in the right rear that needs to be replaced. Um, they recommend that we don't drive it in the condition that it is at this point, until repairs are taken care of. And that they tell me it's gonna be less than five hundred dollars, but I put the purchase order for five hundred dollars. So, I purchased order number fourteen zero three, mailed it to City of Dover, to repair Cruises number seventy-three ball joint, ball bearing, and tuna.
Is that, is that in fact the check engine light, the ball bearing?
The tuna.
Oh, the tuna, okay, so it has nothing to do with your, what is it, your, um, I think, your, what's the thing that does? When you check engine light, it, you.
What you're saying, is it some kind of exhaust system?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or the gas cap.
Yeah, 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 exactly, okay. Alright, City of Dover fourteen oh three purchase order for repair of Cruises seventy-three, five hundred dollars.
A second there.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? Always free to say hi.
Hi.
Alright. So, just to respond, I mean, you know, making it off to five hundred, and if, if it's going to be less, it's fine, and the money, we don't even encumber purchase orders. We don't have a accounting system that encumbers, so, if it comes in at, you know, four hundred, that's all that's coming out of your budget.
Oh, sure, I see.
Yeah, so it's just the authority, so that.
Right.
Everybody knows that the board has actually looked at this before, which is a good thing, and I appreciate that. Although for emergency, emergency work is emergency work.
Um, I, I sent you folks an email last week on the pros and cons of the, the after-hours drop box out here.
Yes.
After, after I sent the initial one out, Kate showed me the unit that she was hoping to purchase. And, you know, I think if they attach that box to the building, along with the stand, I, I, I can't see anybody ripping it off the building.
When you say attaching it to the building, you're like folding it?
Sure, screw it into the building, yes.
Yeah.
Remember what you would do is, whatever the size of the box, is you would cut the, the siding, and bolt it right to, right to the building itself. So, the siding, it will, the siding will come up to the top of the box, and it will, it's nice, you know, you see seal it in, but the box itself will be bolted to the, to the, to the building itself, and then you have the stand, the stand, the stand will be bolted to the deck out there. So, so I think that it would be a little bit more difficult for someone to steal it, as opposed to just leaving it on the stand someplace, cause then you can, you know, do this with it in the stand, and, and, and off with it. I also look at the camera, we can also tilt the camera down just a little bit, we're not gonna be able to get that wall there, in the front doors, but you'll get more of, more view of the landing itself, so.
So, again, with the board having agreed to do this, but that would be, if I were to agree to it, I would say, you know, providing that Chief Dusharm has said this is where, you know, this is the safest, more secure way to do it, so, we'll, you know, we're gonna have a conversation about this, you know, later on in the meeting, and we'll. If, if we decide to approve it, you'll probably hear from Caroline or one of us, and we may still sit on it, so.
Sure.
We'll, we'll see.
I'll just wait for the other mention word.
Alright, thank you.
And the last thing that I have is building committee meeting.
Building committee meeting?
The space needs.
Oh, space needs, yes, yes, I will get that out this week, yeah, and C I P as well.
I know time is running out.
Yeah, we get into this crunch, yeah, absolutely.
That's all there are for you folks, I need anything for us.
Well, just a question, has any other land idea come up? I mean, you know my concern about Silver Street.
Yes, uh, no.
What you're concerned about Silver Street?
That it is merely adequate as far as space, and that there's no opportunity for, you know, for growth, with some new, uh, new, some new regulations come around with how to manage a, a police station, and whatever that new thing is, that place wouldn't be big enough for us to do it, whatever, whatever it is.
Unless you went up.
Well, I, I think for, if you, if you're just talking about police department only, I think you're gonna be good for another fifty, sixty years on that site. Even if you had to add a small addition in the back or something like that, there's still plenty of room over there. Uh, if you're talking now town hall, uh, as well over there, town hall being the second floor, you know, unless you're planning on expanding the number of offices that you have up here, it might, it might be, it might be tight. At least as a park, you know, parking standpoint. You can certainly fill the entire second floor.
But for police, you feel, really fifty, sixty years.
Oh, yeah, I think so. If the building is done correctly, you should be able to be, not have any, any major addition to that building for fifty years.
I won't be living through that.
Easily, right, and I, I won't be hearing about that.
Where, where's, where's that team getting there? But, but.
That's a long way to go, though, that's, that, that's.
But certainly, if, if you, if the town decides to even put a town hall there as well, and you utilize the entire space as a second floor up there, um, the only problem is, is parking. I think we, we, we have, on the diagram now, somewhere around twenty-four parking space, or could we do twenty-four parking spaces? Could be a few more if we moved the building a little closer to, you know, the, the far corner, something like that. So, you, you, one, you, right away, you'd increase the number of parking spaces that you have here, so you'd be able to have larger meetings, um, and whatnot, not everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I personally, I mean, there're gonna be a lot of discussions, I hope, and that's why it's good to get started, cause I think, you know, we should have, you know, some public hearings to get some input. Uh, but, the, for me, it's too complicated to think about moving the town, you know. So, I'm, I'm mostly concerned about the, the police station aspect of it. But, what I, what is interesting to me is what we might do with that space, if you were to leave down, down there, and, and how many parking spaces it opens up here, and, uh, so I would just be curious about that. I, I don't know if you have, I mean, these are, these are just like. But I'm a lot more comfortable here in fifty, sixty years than.
Oh, yeah, easily, yeah. I, I, I could not imagine seeing another major, another major new building, and. No, you know, unless the town of Rollins all of a sudden becomes like a killeries, and it just explodes, but I, I personally don't see that, you know, with the current, uh, um, rules and regulations zoning and whatnot.
Well, you don't have a growth ordinance, I, I, I would like to, I, I would love to see the planning board consider a growth ordinance. We don't have one, but, I mean, but that is a consideration, yeah.
Well, you have a lot of open land here, in, in the hands of people.
And look what's happened to Dover, where there's barely a, an open lot anywhere, and at some point, I know we've, there's a lot of land that's been conserved privately, but there's a lot that isn't.
Right, and there's, I mean, the current owners aren't going to sell it, but what happens when it, when something happens with them, and it goes to family, or, or doesn't live here, or doesn't want it.
Economy changes, that's why people make decisions.
So, but, I mean, I mean, the only thing is, I think, we own this land, and it will satisfy the police department, at, at least, and to add a, a, the land to the project.
But, but Denise, that is our asset one way or the other, so we could decide to sell that, and it's in a residential area, so it might make a pretty penny. And, you know, use that to fund a land purchase somewhere else, so.
Well, yeah.
That's the, you know, I think we'd make, I know, um, I think he sold the land, the land next door for, well, he had a house on, so that is, that is a healthy. He got a good deal for the land, and that was a couple of years back. We should've, should've bought it.
Yeah, I know.
We should've bought it, but, you know, that's that, the town said no, so we didn't, so that's the end of that conversation.
Bob, can you confirm, it's Kim, Charlie Putnam?
Uh, Bill Irving.
Go.
Myself, Lieutenant.
My, oh, no, you're, you're taking Mike's place, you're.
I'm on that, I am on that, I was always on that.
Yes, that's what I mean, but I think you're the, you're now on it, as our executive, I don't think.
Well, C I P, for sure, but I always was, Mike wasn't on it.
Oh, he, he was not?
No, I was on it.
Wasn't Mike on it?
Oh, wait, I'm.
No, no, Mike was on it, then he got out, so he'd be on it.
Or he was there as police?
For, for the space needs, yes.
Oh, mine was on it?
Yeah, he was, yeah.
I remember some links.
Oh, no, he probably was in. Okay, so that's, so it was just Charlie Put, Putnam.
And I, I don't know, I don't know if, if, uh, Jody had expressed a desire as a budget committee member to be on that.
I thought she did for C I P, but I will, I'll look into that. Okay, so I just wanna make sure, I'll pull the, the minutes from the last, the ones I have on file, and just send it out, but I will do it this week.
Okay, true.
Alright.
And you're doing much better?
I am doing, I'm not perfect, I'm not perfect, but I'm good enough to go to Europe.
None of us are, whoa, hey, you're doing okay.
For three weeks.
Well, good for you.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Uh, my assistant device appeared.
Alright, anything else you need?
So, how many vehicles are we down now? Just one?
Well, just the one, the seventy-three, we're just down, but we got the other car back and forth. Uh, we picked that up last Friday, actually.
Okay, and everything?
Last Friday, and everything's good. We did about three, seven hundred dollars worth of work, all covered by warranty.
Awesome.
So, yeah.
Good, good, that is good.
So, in the future, you know, we really need to do something like getting the mileage down the vehicles, so, you know, we're looking, considering, we'll, we'll put forward plans sometime during the budget process here, but either, uh, leasing two, to get the two cars, and then pay over three years, so you're paying basically the same amount, you're getting the car sooner, or maybe you're considering purchasing a couple of Dover's used ones, um, in place of, in, in place of a, a new one at some point, so. Cause, cause they get rid of theirs fifty thousand miles, and they, they sell them for about twelve, eleven to twelve. Because they get rid of theirs at fifty thousand miles, and they, they sell them for about twelve, eleven to twelve thousand dollars in that range, yeah.
So, because we're, remind me again, we're trying to, we're trying to, something happened a while back that got us off track of what the usual plan is.
We had a car that was, a new car that was totaled from a rear end collision, and we weren't able to replace it until the next cycle. So that left us about a year and a half of mileage creeping up on all the other, all the other cars. I mean, they all had high mileage to begin with, but now all three vehicles are well over a hundred thousand miles, and except for the newest one that we got in twenty sixteen, so.
Alright, so yeah, and we'll consider whatever, whatever plan seems to make sense.
Do they have SUVs as well?
Pardon me?
Do they have SUVs as well?
Dovas come on straight to SUVs, yes. For patrol, they get, they get sent in for detectives and the chief and whatnot, for patrol, straight to SUVs, so.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, do some math. And.
We'll have it all prepared for you.
Yeah, thank you, you're doing a good job, and we appreciate that, so it's easier for us to just look at it, make a decision. And the sooner, the sooner we can get, I know we're always busy, but the sooner we can try to get plans out there to the public and see what they think about the building, it's always helpful.
Alright, very good, I'll be late.
Recreation, or do you want to write to the drop box? Let's do recreation.
Well, let's talk about the drop box.
Alright.
So I'm gonna ask you to defer it, because it won't be fair, because I'm not gonna vote for it. So if Mike is for it and you aren't, then I don't want it to fail because I'm not for it. So I ask you to just defer it till you come back, and you and Mike can vote.
Absolutely, absolutely. Do you wanna state what the, what, or do you just, you know?
I just think it's, it's taking away from the community, working with our, with our town people, and it takes the personality away from it by having a drop box. I think we're doing more and more not one-on-one conversations with people, and I, I just, it's losing the
Small town.
Small town feel. The more we push them out, the less you're gonna get support, because they're not being actively involved if they keep on putting something in the box. That's, and that's just my opinion, but I, I, I don't want this to fail if you both are really for it, I mean, that's, it's just my opinion.
I can say, well, I don't, I really, I don't think we had, I don't think Michael chimed in on this, I mean, here, here's my thought, I mean, I, I understand, I do understand sort of the loss of personal connection. But on the other side of the coin, you know, as somebody who, who worked, like many of our town residents worked, you know, there were times that, back in the olden days, where if I couldn't get to the bank when the bank was open, or even the Saturday morning hours, you know, you're kinda stuck. So when the ATMs came around, I said, oh, big yay. So my, my thought is that no matter what hours were open, unless we decided to do twenty-four seven, which we're not gonna do, someone's gonna be able to take advantage of paying something in an easier, in an easier manner. You know, and if they were running, if they meant to be here by seven and something happened and they're ten minutes late, you know, they'll still, still be able to, you know, to pay their things. So that, that's my side of all of that, and they're both, you know, they're both legitimate considerations. And I, I respect what you just said, we will defer it until, until I'm back and we can let Kate know about that.
Okay.
Alright, so let's go to, to recreation, do we, do we want Celia to come up, or do you wanna handle, what, what is your pleasure?
Um, are you here with any information?
Not, at the moment.
Okay. Okay, so, we met last night, and there's a couple of things that I was asked to bring to the attention. One of the things is that the rec director is not getting the initial emails of things that then she's getting copied on the follow-up, so they've asked me to make sure that the rec director is on the rec committee's, you know, that your.
Yeah, the email distribution list.
She's only getting the replies from the committee members, she's not seeing the initial email to the committee.
Right, where are they, where's that initial e-mail coming from? Is somebody hitting a link somewhere?
They're coming to the rec committee via personal email accounts, like, somebody will send a question, will you do pre and post care for a teenager?
Yes, it's a person, it's a personal, it's a someone here in town who's sending an email to the rec committee, distribution list. And so they think that she's not getting that.
Why is she seeing, but, but why is she seeing the replies?
Well, that, yeah, see, that didn't make sense.
And I don't know exactly, because
Unless someone's adding her there.
This morning, she was, she was the first one to respond to an email that came into the rec committee.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that, yeah.
It, I, and I will double check, but I, I was looking just yesterday because the chair of the school board wanted to send, wanted to notify the rec director of things that were happening at the school this summer, and asked me if I had her email, and I didn't, I didn't know whether it was rector, which is what it is, or I did rec director. So I looked, I looked it up, I think on the, I, I will double check, and I will, I'll let the two of you know.
But she might, she might wanna make sure that she doesn't have them like in a spam folder or something, because that could be,
Yeah, she, sometimes.
You know, and she's not catching that.
Yep.
And I didn't think about that last night, but talking about it now, I kind of think, you know, sometimes it will just go in spam for some unreason.
And sometimes you have to put it, you have to mark it as not spam.
Exactly, the market is not spam.
Right, right, and so, if, if you get a chance, can you drop her a line just to tell her to go ahead and check that, you know?
Yeah, and like, just to make sure.
And I will check, I will check the user, yeah, absolutely, and I'll let, just let the two of you know.
And if you can just double check, yeah. Yeah, that's fine.
From my perspective, when I do rec committee, I add rec, direct, at, wrongs for two.
It's rector, I think, right, right.
D I R, R E C D I R.
Yeah, rector, yeah.
So I add them in.
You shouldn't have to, she should be on the committee, she should be, she's part of that, that group, but I will, I will double check.
Okay.
And I will send out a test, I'll send out a test email.
Okay.
And see if she responds.
Yep.
And I will say, the rest of you, just put this right in your trash.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, don't worry.
Because we had a discussion about that last week.
Okay, one of the other things that they, they, they're having difficulty getting transportation. And so, one of the questions was asked is, is it an option to rent a car?
I don't know, I would ask liability issues to the municipal association, but, you know, the S A U has a van. That, that came out in another conversation I had with the chair of the school board. So, the S A U has a van, and I said, well, huh.
I totally forgot about that.
Because for the teen camp, when I was talking last week, right now.
You're looking for something smaller than a full-size.
Well, looking for something smaller and cheaper, because, I mean, you're talking about a sixty-seat van, bus versus, you know, you're only, there's only, what, eight now?
Uh, there were six.
An eight-passenger van would've been.
Six-passenger van would've been enough. Six or seven-passenger van would be fine, we have, the most we have signed up right at the moment was four teen campers for a week. And we had.
How many?
Four.
Four, okay, not fourteen, four.
No, four.
Teen campers, not fourteen campers.
Um, so four teen campers signed up, so they're gonna check in with C and J, about a smaller bus, they're gonna check in with Feliciano.
Yeah.
And, because to go through for a student who we use for, Camp Raleigh is two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Right.
Yeah, ask, check in with the superintendent of S A U fifty-six, who is, I think they just go to the website, I don't.
Yeah, Maury Lane, but I mean, also, Katie Kraus was the BA now, might be able to answer it as well, or get you an answer, either one of them. But that's, that's, so anyway, I mean, I didn't think renting a car was something that they should do.
No, but there could be, like Feliciano, excuse me, there could be these limos that can have smaller.
Well, they had, what'd she say, it was an SUV that would fit the six.
Yeah, so, so, and that would be an insured, that would be like.
That, that would be fine, because they're holding the insurance, not us holding the insurance if they rent a car.
Right.
But if we go up past six, they're going to a little.
They were in trouble again, yeah, well, no, we wouldn't go home. I mean, that would be, that would be much more money.
Yeah, that would be out of our budget, I think, yeah.
But, yeah, I, I mean, I would check with the S A U, I don't know what they use it for, but they have.
Well, it's special ed, it was, it was, it was something that they had gotten through an S, special ed grant or something, or I figured they're holding.
And they could, I suppose there could be restrictions too, but.
It could be.
You never know, unless you ask, and I don't know how big it is, I don't know how many passengers it holds, but.
Once a van usually holds at least six, and then, I mean.
If it's a mini van, it holds six, like, is like a.
It could be a mini, more, more like a mini bus, you know, kinda thing, I don't, I don't really know, but.
It sits in the parking lot of S A U, you know, look at it, but, anyway, okay, so then, alright, so that was, that. I wanna talk to you about the scholarships in non-public if we can, it doesn't have to be right now, but.
Yeah, okay, so we can save it till the end.
I wanna save it till the end, it's fine. You have submitted all of your recreation grants, you have heard nothing back yet, as far as I know.
So first, I will be getting out a timeline, and the first one due back is June fifteenth.
Okay. So, and then the rec ex officio's authority.
Yes, so, so the board last year talked about this, and, excuse me, like, the question about the scholarship or whatever that you answered. So, what I would like the board to do is, and we did this last year with Jody, is that to give you sort of the same authority level that a department head would have, you know, so for this, the things that you just need to check the budget and you need to check, you know, you know, use your judgment about some things that are, that need to come back to the whole board. Otherwise.
Yeah, I, I think that's fair, and I think that, you know, I wouldn't do anything much more than, yeah.
And cut down. Yeah, nice, right, yes, so, so I think, you know, we can, you know, Michael is, is not here today, but I know we did this last year, I'm very comfortable in saying to you, please go ahead and, and do that, and even for all of these grants, you know, for all the things that happened at the beginning, the board may have to, you may have to come to the board at the end for a signature.
Yeah.
But, you know, some of this, all of this stuff, or, you know, questions about transportation that may be helpful to have a board member be part of, doesn't necessarily have to be the whole board, especially because there's, as you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of traffic.
Right.
And this is a busy time, this is all, and it's still a new program, we're still kinda figuring out the best way to, to manage this. But, so if you just think of yourself as sort of like a department head, that, that might be a way to, 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 to work with the rec department.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that as well. And there's one other thing that.
Yeah, well, choose, choose your words carefully.
I am trying.
I don't know what it is, but.
There is a, there's a misunderstanding about their budget and how their budget works.
Okay.
And, um, what the misunderstanding is, is, is mainly for the teen camp, if you agree with that, right? They don't have the numbers to support it financially to what they put in their budget. However, a member of the committee stated that you have, it's part of the budget, you have to raise and appropriate, and it gives them the right to spend it, which I do not agree with.
It is true, we have to raise and appropriate it, but, but the, 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 the sort of gentle person's agreement we have with the rec committee is that this thing should be revenue neutral.
Right.
So if you know that you're not bringing in, you know, this, if your revenue's going like this, then you have to try to bring expenses on. Right. Because even though we're raising and appropriating it.
We have to raise and appropriate it, but.
If we don't spend it, then it sits in fund balance, so.
Or, as it was stated last night, you could spend it on roads, or you could spend it on this, or, so.
I would.
Bottom line authority, yes.
Yes, I, yeah.
However, it, it has a kind of an, an opinion that because it was part of the budget, it's available to spend, because the conversation last night was, do we cancel teen camp or not? Because at one point, the numbers were really, were not going to.
Work.
Work. And so you do have to give them notice, so, I mean, the sooner you decide whether you can go forward with this or not, because one, a couple of days or whatever, or a couple of weeks, there was only one person in teen camp, right?
One to two.
One to two.
Yeah.
No way are you gonna make the, the financial money for that week because you're talking about trips for the, all the time, and you don't have the financial resources to support that. So, um.
So again, the implication for, for anybody who's listening, is that if the revenue isn't there and the rec committee goes ahead and spends it, our tax rate's going up. Because our tax rate is based on not just the approved appropriations, but also the revenues that we've brought in. So if we haven't brought in the anticipated revenue, then our tax rate is gonna be more than what we projected it to be because of that. And also I would say that the board would look, depending on the size of the deficit, you know, the, the, the rec committee runs the risk of the board looking a stance at the whole program, not.
Well, that's my fear. My fear is if you go with, if you come across with that attitude, and not, and they're, trust me, they're working as hard as they can to get this program successful, but you have to, you don't wanna affect Raleigh camp because this camp is not being successful.
Right.
And the whole picture of it could be at risk if, if we're not careful about how we handle going forward. And knowing that you still have time to make those decisions and be stuck on not because you've, you know, you have a budget.
Right.
Concerns me, because I think it could be at risk in the next budget cycle.
And, 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 and. Absolutely, this will, it will not be a happy situation.
So.
Because we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars. I do know that Dean D is coming tomorrow to speak to Caroline, I don't know if it's about the overall budget or just, you know, how do we manage.
Well, Caroline had asked them, asked, had sent out an email, because she was having a hard time with reporting on this sports engine or whatever it is. So she was looking to find, it was her understanding that they were gonna reconcile to make sure what the cash is coming in versus the people attending and, and stuff, and Caroline was having a hard time getting what she needed to with the deposits, and, and, so I think that's why she's going in.
Okay.
So, which I think is a good thing.
So Denise, how, so, okay, so that's, that's more sort of a business process and.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
How, how, so, I'm concerned, based on what you just said.
Me too.
And so what, um, what, what, what guidance should, should the board be delivering, some, some guidance, and?
Well, I did, I don't know if it was received properly, but I did, I stated that, that you have to come in in a neutral budget, and that's the expectation, and if you don't know that this is gonna work the way we should really consider thinking, bailing on it.
Bailing.
As soon as, so, we don't mean to get into the nineteen.
So I, how's this first suggestion, that you kind of summarize what you've just said in an email to the rec committee that copies us? And say that we've discussed this, the board has discussed this, and the board believes that a, a large deficit in the rec committee could, could cause us to rethink our, our confidence and our ability to continue to finance the. I mean, that's, that's all I, that's true, right?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll send something to you guys, and, you know, you can, before we send anything to them, you know, you can
Okay.
Do whatever, and I know you're not gonna have a lot of time, I know, but.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I know.
I'm just concerned about that kind of, that made me very uncomfortable last night, because that's not my interpretation of.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. It is, it is, I mean, there's truth to that, but we didn't, when we talked to the rec committee, we specifically said, you guys have to be revenue neutral. So, yeah, we've got this, whatever it is, ninety-some-odd thousand dollars in the rec committee, but we're expecting you to bring in the ninety-some-odd thousand dollars. And if, if there's something that's problematic, we expect the rec committee to try to fix it.
So, it had been addressed by this board, what is our, what was the committee's threshold, and I was trying to get at that last night of when do we cancel the teen program? And. And there are two committee members that are supposed to be working on that and coming up with an idea by the end of the week, so that they can resolve the issues.
I, I, I think teen camp is like in the thirty thousands of dollars or something.
It dropped down to fourteen thousand eight hundred.
Okay.
Is where that teen, where teen camp stands right now, um, and.
Without any of the grants that.
Without any of the grants, that's our income, and, um, that's in the town report, um, and they, um, we're looking at fifteen campers per week to hit the break-even point, which we haven't even made.
About four.
Well, it, it is, it, um, it's different for every week, I mean, they, they sign up for the weeks that they want to be part of it, so you might have four this week, you might have five this week, or two this week, so in the whole picture of things, they're not gonna make it, I mean, I, I don't, I, we're only talking about two more weeks of signup. I don't think they're gonna make it, and I think that they really should have considered that last night, and it wasn't.
I agree.
Thank you.
Well, and so in that email, you can, you can encourage them to, uh, make a decision expeditiously, because a deficit of that nature is.
It, it's gonna be huge, if they go forward with it.
You know, the board does its best to try to build a budget that we project will keep the tax rate at some sort of even keel, and something like this can throw it all out of whack. And it, 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 it makes it more difficult then for us to, 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 to have the town to have confidence in the kinds of budgets that we, we build and, and present to the town, so.
They were given lots of options last night of condensing the program, enforcing the kids into a smaller time, and then eliminating some of the overhead and all of that. And those are all considerations that the two committee members, hopefully will take over.
Encourage them to make this decision ASAP.
Right, I just don't want Raleigh camp to suffer for something that they're, and, and they're, all good ideas, it's just, it needs more work and try it again next year, but I, I just don't want Raleigh camp, because it was a wonderful year last year, and I wanted to see it go forward, very successful.
A successful and appropriate to build on.
Absolutely, so possibly the teen camp isn't the, and my understanding is very few are Rollinsford residents on that, correct? I believe that is the case.
I know the one that I picked up at the town hall and dropped off last night was a Rollinsford resident, and that one of the committee members has two children that will participate in it, um, so I'm thinking five maybe? Um, because the two that were committee members were not signed up last night, so.
But you need, we need an average of how many?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
An average.
You haven't even got that. Because some of the committee members who haven't signed up are not doing every week.
Right, and the committee member who signed up, who I'm counting, is only doing three weeks, I think, with their children, and the one that I hit, it was only doing five weeks. So.
I would definitely say strong letter to follow is, is, is in order.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And, yeah.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I know, I, I.
I mean, I feel bad, but, you know, that kind of a deficit is, yeah, is preventable, so, because we can just say sorry.
And I think. We need to make the parents aware, so, as soon as possible, so they can make other arrangements.
As soon as possible, because they rely on it.
Right, yes.
Right, exactly.
And we don't wanna leave them high and dry without another opportunity to enroll their kids.
That's right. Right, so I would say, that's why, I mean, this, we should try to resolve this, this is, like, this, this week, that's the whole, yeah.
You can. Okay.
Let's do this week.
Alrighty.
Thank you for bringing that to our, I, here's, I've been, I've been a little concerned, so.
Yeah.
I'm not surprised to hear this, but, uh, I hardly agree with your interpretation, that it's only in that expense budget because of the agreement we have with the rec committee that the revenue's gonna support it.
Right, that's, that was my, that's my assumption, and, and just because it's there, doesn't mean you can spend it, if you're not, knowing you were supposed to.
Right, so. Yes. It is. Knowing that you're supposed to offset, right.
And hopefully she gets some grants, but even if she gets grants, it's still not gonna fit, fix it all, you know, so, but she's done a great job on the grants.
Yeah, it's unbelievable work, yes. And it's also good, I mean, you're building, you know, you're building that work of connections and, you know, that's a, that's a good thing, all right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, did we now?
Building permits online, on the table now.
Uh, I'm just going to say, uh, well, yes and no, um, so from an overall process point of view, several years ago now, I had suggested that a better business process for building permits would be to have Tom number and log them when they come into him. Otherwise, they just a blank form, and to, you know, the front office, I don't think needs to get involved, it takes, it time, they're asking for the contractor's name, they're, they're signing a number, so we had some screw-ups with the numbering. There's no screw-up, if Tom gets a permit that's brand new, and he's got the log, and he logs it in, or, or he'll give it to, or he'll okay, say okay to log, and give it to Salma to log it in, whatever, but it, it keeps the numbering in one person's hand. And it, it removes them other than from maybe handing out the form from the process. And so if they're not having to be the start of the process, we can just put these, it's a PDF, we can just put it online, and people can, can just take it down and fill it out. And not have to come, I know you'd like them to come, but, you know.
No, I mean.
But it's easy, you know.
It's different, I mean, what, what is his hours, how often is he here?
He's usually here on Mondays, because.
Just one day a week?
Well, he'll, he'll do inspections as he needs to, but I mean, as far as sitting in there and, and processing, doing letters, it's, he spends a few hours here on Mondays.
Okay, can I ask you a personal question? Can you start a project without, i- if it's submitted but hasn't been?
You're supposed to have a building permit, now, do people start projects without building permits? Yes, and so I myself retroactively submitted a building permit for my generator when I was sitting here one night, and somebody came in and asked with a building permit for a generator, I'm like, oh, you have a building permit for a generator? It's like my first year here or something, and so again, you know, if, and that's what I said, well, if I as a board member don't know this, there are lots of people out there who don't know that you need building permits for just about everything except the fence.
Yeah.
And I don't know what the rationale is for that.
But I have, but I have the building permits, and I have the quotes, but I have a tiny issue, because I don't think I'm gonna get it back in time, that's my problem. So if I turned it in to Caroline.
We have thirty days, the board does have thirty days, well, let, let me just say, without naming names, uh, that the board's preference, because this is, it's from state statute, is that, or our own ordinance, is that buildings shouldn't start without an approved building permit. However, the board's practice is that, please, if you haven't done it, and you start, you know, do it, and whenever, you know. So we have not stopped people from filing it after the fact or during the fact, but the, we, we do like to see them ahead of time. It's like purchase orders, and that's, that's what I will say, and then, you know, you know, people like, you know, we've seen some people that it's already done, and, you know, like, uh, and we know we didn't have a building permit, so we, we write to them, and then they come in and they, they were lucky. They filed a building permit, so.
I'll, I'll work it out the best I can.
Yes, yes, okay, uh, so, so this is just, I, I don't see any objection to putting these things, it's a PDF, and it's a form.
Yeah.
So, and apparently the front office is now okay with not handing them out. Michael and Jody had some way of describing it that I couldn't quite grasp the logic of. And something about, well, if they, if they didn't pick it up here and have our people start to fill it out, then we, I, I don't even remember what it was, because it's not logical. Meaning, if you need to have a building permit, it doesn't have to go, start there, you know, and if you're gonna take a piece of paper you copied from anywhere, if you're gonna defraud and make it out, well, it's fraud, right, and, and people commit fraud, and it, and if we catch them, then that, that's not legal. So, but I don't believe putting a PDF online is, is going to either inhibit or encourage fraud.
No, I, I agree.
So, all right, so we'll start putting them online, and I think, uh, Salma, I talked to, the other thing that we want to put online is the building permit log, it's public information.
Oh.
Right, so, uh, Caroline is gonna work with Tia to get a link to, to the spreadsheet that you do.
Yep.
And so once that's there, then we can talk about how we sign the building permits. Because, you know, if, all we need to do is make them public, you know, they're, they're public information, so once the link is available, we can, it talks, right now, we can't, I guess according to our zoning ordinance, we are the ones that have to sign it, but, you know, we can just say, okay, it's the end of the meeting, and we're just gonna take the next five minutes, we're gonna sign the building permits, and you can just have a one line in the minutes to say building permits were signed, and then in parentheses say they're available online, spreadsheet is available online, and that's, or at town hall. And you know, we don't have to put a specific building permit, just like we don't put each individual check that we sign, right?
Right.
So if people really want to see building permits that were, that we signed, or, and we can add a tab for certificates of occupancy, they can go to that spreadsheet, but it's not linked yet, so the only thing we're talking about right now is putting the PDF for the building permit online.
They'll still be able to get links here, though.
Oh, sure, yeah, yes, it won't be solely online, but they don't have to come in and get it started here, so we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for me.
All right, SRPC vacancy, there's only one right now, and that is Judy Nelson, who resigned, uh, and it says of July one, so it's not like a June one.
It was June one.
So, I, I checked in with Mike, and I may have done it, I don't know, I think I may have just done it individually, uh, and asked if he, if, is he, if he's interested, or are you interested in being on the Stratford Regional Planning Commission? It's an hour and a half meeting once a month during the day, it's like from ten to eleven-thirty or twelve on a Friday, once a month. And then once a quarter, there's a late afternoon meeting, like at four o'clock, that's what, that's the, that's the meeting schedule for Stratford Regional Planning Commission.
And where is the meetings held?
So, good question, so the Friday ones are held at the SRPC, uh, headquarters in Rochester, near Rochester, uh, high school there.
Yep.
Spalding, you know, what used, what was gonna be the Spalding High, they're in that building with all those other things. The quarterly's are held, those are, those are really interesting, they're held around the, um, district.
Oh, okay.
So they were in Rollinsford some time, I don't know when, talking about agriculture, different types of agriculture, I don't know, but it was a little panel, and our, uh, Branmore Farm, Phil was on it, and it was a professor from UNH, John Ed, and a woman from some other group, so it was a nice discussion, maybe it was on local farming, or eating local, or something like that. Other times, it's been on microbreweries, and we had that in Dover, and, uh, the seventh settlement guy was speaking at that, and this is when he was talking about going to the no tip.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, they're, the, actually, the, those late afternoon ones that happen once a quarter are interesting, the Friday morning ones, guess my fire hose. They're, they're always, they're filled with information, and, you know, it, it can be, uh, frustrating to know that, well, that's a great idea. Well, we don't, we don't have any capacity to, to use that great idea, so, uh, but you'll hear from the Department of Transportation, you'll hear from people who are involved in mental health and physical health, and, uh, you know, with programs that are statewide that we can latch into, latch on to, you know, regional transportation like Coast is sometimes there. And of course, it doesn't make sense for them to come here, so, so that's what being an SRPC commissioner is, so if you would like to think about it as well, we can, we can, we will defer this. Well. There, there will be a second, actually, there will be a second vacancy, because as soon as I think I, we need to fill duties, as soon as I think I can find somebody to fill mine.
Oh, you're both on it?
Oh.
Yeah, so as soon as, but I don't wanna leave Rollinsford high and dry, although if there's a meeting in June, I won't be going to it, obviously, but I'll go to the July meeting, and until such time as we can find someone, so there's one definite vacancy now, there, there will be another vacancy as soon as I can find somebody who.
I mean, are you opposed to putting it on, like, through the email, um, post, and seeing if someone in town is interested in being part of it?
I'm not opposed, but there are three people who I think are, one is our reselling interest, and the other two are planners, so I think they would be good people to ask. And I might ask, we might ask the planning board first, before, but, and then, because we did put it out on the list, we put it out on the list in March, and we got Jackie Schroeder. And, uh, we, we at least put her on the conservation committee, she may still be interested in doing, in doing SRPC, so she's one. There's, uh, Michelle Mears, who's a planner for the city of Rochester, and lives in Rollinsford, so, I mean, having a planner is a really good opportunity. There's, I think her name is Alana Piatz, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name, she's a planner for the city of Dover, who has recently moved to, um, Rollinsford. So, so my thought, and Alana said something about, well, come, come talk to me during the summer, so that's, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be very interesting, I just don't know if I could do it enough, because I, you know, work full-time, so, I mean, and I would.
It is, it is, it, yes, and somebody who doesn't work full-time? It's still a, a lot.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I guess I would rather you have someone who really wants to be part of it, and, and has the time to do it, would be the best, because.
So are you, would you object to our appointing Michael, and, and you can still think about the second one, or, and we'll look around for, to see if we can, with some of these people that I've checked with?
Yeah, I mean.
How would you like to think about that?
Well, I'll think about it, because where I work, my biggest months of, um, are spring and summer, fall and winter are slower, so I have more options. However, you know, I just, I don't wanna commit to something that I would be on, so, yeah, I mean, I will think about it if you want, like, Michael, that's fine.
Yeah, if we, I would, I would love to hear a motion to appoint Michael to the current.
Does he know to do it?
He said, he said, he is, he is on, he is on the TAP, which is the Transportation Advisory Committee, which is a subset. And I, I asked him, so Mike, would you, would you be willing, how would you feel about being a commissioner, and then with, for somebody for TAP, it's not quite so many meetings, it's more road-based, I was actually thinking, what about if we could talk to Herbie Edda about that? Because he's very concerned about safety and roads and Portland Avenue, and has a, uh, you know, great administrative background, and is also an engineer, so, so I don't know, so we might consider that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
That position was empty for quite a while before Michael decided to do it, so, so, yeah, I, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to appoint Mike to the vacant SRPC.
I'll make that motion.
All right, I would second that motion.
Okay.
Now, hearing no comments or questions, I will call, call it, and all those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations, Michael Rodeau.
Yes.
See, see what, see what you can from going to go to Baltimore? Okay, and I'll check back in with some of these people who just are, you know, are in positions where it could be helpful to have a, have some of the planning experience.
Yeah, sure.
All right, um. Classics roads policy, that was just a reminder, I mean, I did review it, if you haven't seen it yet, uh, at some point, it might be good to, to review, we did find the signed copy. So the board did sign it, and it's up there, uh, and that's just their reminder, so we're gonna table, uh, visioning. MS four permitting, I don't really wanna, there's nothing to say other than I met with the stormwater committee, and I feel that the process of trying to file this notice of intent, which is due on October first, is daunting, and I have a subcommittee meeting this Wednesday that, uh, I hope will help for one small part of it, but it, it's a big, it's a lot to chew, and I don't, uh, I'm saying that I'm, I'm wondering if we might need to use, we have the five thousand dollars in the budget for stormwater management, we spent one for the secret stormwater collection dues. We may need some help just to get this thing written, so, just saying that. A table in the conversation, I've been doing twice monthly, and Oak Street Battery, that's Mike's, and the other thing we talked about Oak Street is that John Storey may be interested in calling a meeting, and I think, I think we should be, we should board member as well as her associate.
Okay.
Uh, so I think we did everything, uh, ready for the folders? So I think we did everything, ready for the folders, I think?
Okay, building permit, 2018-052260 Bear Road, Matt Bannon. I can't read this here. Cosmetic upgrades to existing kitchen bath, painting-
Probably don't need that.
Yeah.
We don't need to discuss the-
Uh, value is the thirty thousand, the fee is $325.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I can sign, I can sign, it doesn't make any difference.
We'll discuss with that.
Oh, I see, oh, good. Now, I think, though, that the expires of permit, they have to allow, expires on, I never know what to suggest. I think we should ask Tom to fill it in.
For what? Give him thirty days.
What's he been giving them?
Six months.
Six months? All right, so let's say-
December 15.
Thank you so much. Let's make it December 31, though, just to-
Sure.
Okay.
Be generous.
Be generous. All right.
Okay. The next one is 2018-030 Chinook House? Chinook?
Chinook House, yes.
Or it could be one of the Second Street?
Second.
Yeah, one of the, they have, each have their own name, each of those buildings.
They did it online, they didn't have your signature.
Remove and replace roofing. Value at $11,000, and the fee is $135.
What were, sorry, Salma, what were you saying?
Oh, it's just that what came in-
They messed up copy.
With payment, you know, and they copied it, and, and it's-
Is their payment correct?
Oh, yeah, it's in the meeting. But we had no signature, so we couldn't accept it.
I was talking to my neighbor, Mark, who was happy to tell me that he did get a building permit, or whatever, but he hasn't received it yet. I said, "Well, well, we don't really have a follow-through, so just, but I know we signed it." Board's not part of it. So I said, "Just come pick it up." You know, we don't send it out, just come pick it up, pay for it, whatever. But he was one of the ones.
Lady, yeah.
Well, no, no, he was the one who was talking to me just very innocently one day, saying, "Well, I'm gonna do this, that, or the other thing." So after he moved in, I said, "Uh-huh." And, "Have you thought about applying for building permit?" He looked at it, he says, "Huh?" Oh, dear.
The other thing is the drop-off, so we'll leave that there.
Yeah.
Check, so we'll put this, and now this. This is a letter to Brian and Caitlin Hood, Prospect Street. Renovations to the house.
Oh, I just, do you have a building permit?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it, did Tom sign it, or am I supposed to say?
I'll take you out.
Okay.
What's the street address?
526, right?
526 Prospect Street. Okay, this one is a request for disbursement for the library director. Amount of requested disbursement is $2,500. Collection development, summer reading, children's programming, collection maintenance, internet expense, and library supplies.
So this is how the library accesses the-
They get their money?
Yeah, their money. So I will, because this money, I will ask for a motion for this request.
Okay, I have motion to issue out $2,500 to the library for supplies.
And I will second-
And it's six one.
Great. And I will second that. Any questions or comments? All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, by the way, if you, whenever you are ready to get payment, you're stipend, as long as, you know, we just don't like to pay out a order until the order is done, or just not done. This is, this is the form that you would most ask Caroline for, to ask for disbursement. Tom asked us to do that, so we was back, Tom or I.
Well, that makes sense, yeah, for sure. I just wanted you to know, I did review the citizens' credit card.
You did or not?
I did, and it looks good to me.
I also reviewed it, thank you, glad for, you did that. And I did spot something, I'll show you what I spotted. And I asked Caroline, and then we, I found the answer later on. Where's Caroline's section? Caroline.
Yeah?
All right, so I had forgotten that this is 160, whatever it is, 160 dollars, when, this, this is our, the Google accounts. Rector@rollinsford, Denise Knoll@rollinsford, and it's 10 bucks a month. I mean, it's the best deal ever, because we have, it's not just the emails, we have unlimited storage, it's vaulted, so, you know, it never goes away, if somebody issues a subpoena, we can grab it. At least that's what I've been told. The servers are all within the United States. This is what they have done for the business plans, which is what we're under. And so, anyway, we were paying it through a third party who was offering some support, and they bowed out, and Google said, "Well, we'll go to you directly. And do you want us to just charge a credit card?" So it's 160 bucks a pop right now, which is within our thing, so, so that, so we'll be seeing it once a month on the credit card, and that's for Google. You know, they're, they're, I remember when we were first looking, there's similar towns that would pay tens, tens, tens of thousands of dollars for computer stuff. You know, and 160 bucks a month.
Yeah, that's not bad.
And we don't have to worry about, you know, spam security, we don't have to worry about, you know, all these, these ransom things, where, remember the General Computer, I think was ransomed a few years back? All this terrible stuff.
Terrible stuff.
We just don't have the money to support, you know, IT, those kinds of, that kind of IT specialization for security, et cetera, et cetera. So, okay, so.
So this will go to you, you'll have to look at it as well. Oh, I think that was always something we were, I don't know what this is. This is a town said oil company.
Oh, is this our annual fuel plan?
Yeah. What is that for?
That's, so, we get a fuel contract that says they, they'll offer it so much above wholesale, they call it RAC. So much above wholesale.
What kind, what fuel, I mean, oil?
So it's, I believe it's propane, or not propane. It's, it's heating oil.
Okay.
And it's propane as well, I believe, not diesel.
So you don't, you don't do it?
We didn't do, well, we issued an RFP, the school issued an RFP a few years back, we issued one. We've been going with Townsend, because the last couple of ti, it's sort of like the Rose, the last couple of times we did it, they were the-
Lowest?
No. And they came out of, do you remember who, it was a local company, and then Townsend's bought them out.
I was trying to think of who it was that was for.
And I just don't, I don't remember. So, you know, if, if you thought the town had the, again, it's a question of, do we have the resources to, you know, they've given us good service, they, I don't know what, I didn't see this one, I don't know what the cost is, fuel, oil, costs are going up. I just did our own fuel plan, so.
Well, it doesn't say.
It doesn't say?
Certificate of state use.
Well, maybe this is something different.
Yeah.
To support federal's claim for credit repayment under section blah, blah, blah in the IRS. So the undersigned buyer hereby supervises the following under penalty of perjury. Buyer will use the undyed diesel diesel oil, which the certificate relates for the exclusive use of the state or local government. Well, that would be true, we don't sell any diesel oil to anybody else, we just use it. The certificate applies to the following. I will, I guess I don't know. If you think, can you ask Caroline to say what?
More information?
Yeah, what is the, what is the purpose of this, and what do we need to be thinking of? I'm sorry, I was way off base. Should we get it one soon, because I just got mine. So maybe you can put secondarily, what about the annual fuel contract?
And this is for Matthew and Catherine issue.
There we go. More than one.
Been apprised of the deck installations. There you go. That is how I have it. They got?
Anything from the community?
What are you doing this week? Any activities? I didn't hear any.
Oh, we probably, yes, very good. So I am, hopefully, going to, I'm still not driving, so, the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition that we belong to, that George goes to, and one of our board members, Paul Casall, you know, there's usually one of the three of us that are there, sometimes all three of us. I've missed the last few, because I either had another town engagement, or I haven't been able to drive. So, but this is specifically to address, it's a subcommittee specifically to address one of the sections in our MS4 notice of intent. I think it's a notice of intent to comply with the MS4 regulations. I'm never quite sure how articulated, but anyways, it's a section, we have to figure out how, what are we gonna do for public outreach and for education. So that's what I'm going to, and it's Wednesday. And on Friday, I'm going to Stockholm.
Yay.
Which has nothing to do with the town. So Denise, what's?
I am doing planning board tomorrow in Mike's absence.
Oh, that's right.
I have no idea anything about it, but I will sit there and try to learn. That's all I can do.
And I applaud you for it, because I would be saying the same thing if it were the reverse.
Yeah, so, I'm going to be attending that one.
Michael has been the person that we've looked to for-
Hopefully, they know we can meet for a lot of answers.
Well, there's a planning consultant, so John Krebs, he's usually at the meetings. And so he's the pro. And so if there's a question, I mean, really are ex officios there to break things back and forth? And not expected to really be the expert on planning, but, yeah. So.
And that's here? And is it at seven, do you know?
It's here.
Okay.
I think it is seven.
Seven, okay.
Yeah, and I know that they used to, they have, they're one committee that's sort of kept at the old seven o'clock.
So that's what I'm doing, I don't have anything else else this week.
And my turn is over town.
Yeah, trying to get my committees together for Chief Duchamp and CIP. So I'm gonna send those letters out this week.
So the RAC committee wants to move forward with getting funds from the local Walmart store, which we need signature from the board on. I didn't know if the letter was still on the folder, or if we needed to do another letter to have the board sign to give us permission to go ahead and get funds from them. They have a specific format.
I know.
Or if it needs any updating before we sign it.
So what I can start on this letter is to verify, I don't know why it's capital P, that the town of Rollinsford, New Hampshire is a certified agency. It's, we're not an agency, we're a municipality. A certified municipality is recognized by the state of New Hampshire. Town of Rollinsford was incorporated on July 3rd, 1849. I'll assume that was true, I, it's about right, that's all I can say. By the New Hampshire General Court Legislature, the Rollinsford Recreation Committee is authorized by the current select board authorizing agents of the town to request funding. Here I authorize the Rollinsford Recreation Committee to apply for funds from Walmart and Walmart Community Foundation for the enhancements of their programs, their being a recreation committee, and the betterment of the community as a whole. So, can I make some edit? Did you write this?
It's from their website, but you can make edits, and I will-